So, Mr. Spencer, are you ready?
We're ready.
Well, I'm not.
No, not at all, I'm saying bye.
We'll keep you on track. Now, I want to turn off my phone. I will. Are you ready, Ms. Spencer?
Yes.
Call this meeting to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Banks?
Present.
Blasco?
Here.
Chambers?
Present.
Dietz?
Foster?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chairman Clifton?
Move to excuse those not present.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to excuse in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, before we get started, I'm going to remind everybody to turn off their cell phones, please. The planning commission procedures are in the back of the agenda, and when you come to speak, if you would, speak into the microphone and give us your name and your address. Okay? All right. Has everyone read the minutes?
No, we have an administrative issue to take care of. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Move for approval of minutes.
Okay, let's do the minutes first.
That's fine.
Okay. It's on my agenda to go this way.
Move for approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Spencer?
I ask for the city clerk to come up and swear everybody in. Some of you have been sworn in already. You're welcome to do it a second time, but I just want to get everybody covered to make sure we're all legal and everything, so.
Mr. Spencer, we're not under arrest if we swear twice.
No.
Okay.
And I won't swear like others swear.
Do we need to stand?
I'm not.
So, would you guys mind standing?
No.
And everyone's ready to rock in? You're going to repeat after me. When I say, "Say your name," say your actual name.
(laughing).
So, I say your name.
I, Vandy Blasco.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I would support the Constitution and the law and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the North Little Rock Planning Commission which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
And the check's in the mail. Do we have anything else, Mr. Spencer?
That is it.
Okay. All right. Development Review Committee, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir. The Development Review Committee met and considered item two, SD 2018-78, North Argentino Subdivision, lots four through six, a site plan review of a parking lot located at 1608 Main Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through eight and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any concerns from the commission? Do we have any comments from the audience? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next item was SD 2019-6, Habitat Edition, lots one through nine, tract A, preliminary plat for residential subdivision located at 4901 Allen Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items of one through 12 and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any comments from the commissioners? Do we have any comments from the audience? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item is SD 2019-7, Bruce Oakley Edition, Lot 1R, site plan review of a two-story office building located at the southeast corner of Gribble and Cheryl Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 10 and subsections, and Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the report.
All right. All right. Now, we're going to go to the public hearings. We're going to do a conditional use number 2019-3 to allow a car sales in a C4 zone located at 3535 Highway 161. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Would you come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please, sir?
Tim Blair, 3535 Highway 161.
Thank you very much. And what were you wanting to do?
Want to establish an automobile dealership at that particular location.
Okay. And have you read all the conditions?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree to all of the conditions?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have any comments from the commission? Yes, Ms. Chambers?
Yes, Sean. Wasn't there a question regarding the surfacing on this lot, and we were asking the city engineer to look at that?
Yes, the city engineer met you out on the site, and they've come up with a plan on what is required by the city engineer.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any comments from the audience for or against this conditional use? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes. It has passed. If you'll get with Tim, he'll let you know what to do next.
Well, I appreciate your time, okay?
Yes, sir. Have a nice day and good luck.
All right. Thank you.
All right, the next is conditional use number 2019-4, is to allow a tow lot in an I-1 zone located at 1200 Main Street.
Heather?
Would you give us your name and your address?
My name's Thomas Clausen. The address is 1200 Main Street.
Okay, and that's your home address?
No, sir. My home address is 803 Coulter Road in Sherwood.
Thank you. Okay. And what would you like to do?
To obtain a conditional use, just to continue running a small repo towing business at that address.
Okay, and you made the comment to continue to run it?
Yes, sir. I have a business license, but it's obviously, I purchased it under the wrong address or use or whatever.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get a conditional use now.
And Sean or Tim, can you?
He had a business license probably for the office
Yes.
and misunderstood the system, and so this is really for the storage of the vehicles at the office.
Okay, just a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the commissioners? No, Mr. Banks? No. Any other comments? Any comments from the audience for or against this proposal? Okay, with that, would you call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes. It did pass. If you'll get with Tim, he'll tell you what to do next.
All right.
Just give him a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
But you're welcome.
Hey, Tim.
All right, next is conditional use number 2019-5, to allow a hotel in a C6 zone located at 501 Main Street. Yes?
Hello, Nathan Hamilton, 43 De Soto Circle, North Little Rock.
Good. All right, and tell me what you're wanting to do.
I want to open a hotel at the historic Baker House, right down here on Main Street.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Spencer.
Just a little background on it. So, it's been operating as a bed and breakfast,
Right.
which means someone's on site, so this will not have someone on site, so that comes a hotel then. So, it's, the activity's going to be the same, it's just a change of the way the management's done.
Okay, all right. But there will be someone there to check people in and out?
No, not exactly. There'll be keypad. It'll be like an Airbnb for that.
Got it.
But it's a cross between an Airbnb and a hotel because we will have staff on site every day during the day, taking care, refreshing the rooms, cleaning everything up, taking care of the place.
Okay, just no one living on site?
No one living on site.
Okay. Any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the audience for or against? All right, would you call the roll, please?
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. It did pass. If you'll get with Tim, just give him a call tomorrow.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, we're on conditional use number 20...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Chairman.
Tim, could you record that I abstained from that last vote?
Noted.
Thank you.
Okay, do we still have enough votes to pass then?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right. Special use number 2019-3, to allow a bingo hall in a C3 zone located at 2655 Pike Avenue. Would the applicants come forward?
Mother and daughter.
Okay, and your name and address?
Carisha Martin, and it's 1203 Pleasant Point Circle, Bryan, Arkansas.
Okay.
Kitra Murdock Weathers, 1203 Pleasant Point Circle, Bryan, Arkansas.
Okay. And what are you ladies wanting to do?
We would like to open a bingo hall to use the funds to run and facilitate my nonprofit organization.
And the nonprofit organization is?
It's called Highly Favorite Ministries, and basically, the main tenet of it is to be a pillar in the community so that we can help formerly incarcerated women re-acclimate to society.
Okay.
Ultimately reducing the recidivism of them going back into prison.
Okay, good. All right. Have you read the staff recommendations?
Yes, I read the staff recommendations.
Are we good with that?
I'm good with the staff recommendations.
Any comments from the commissioner? Yes, Mr. Foster?
Is this any way like a recovery center for substance abuse or anything like that?
It won't necessarily be a recovery center, but what we want to do is provide a rigorous course of counseling, therapeutic interventions for the participants, and then they will also have parenting classes, they will also have workforce opportunities and things like that, just every facet of them needing to reintegrate back into the society. We're going to provide that resources for them to be successful.
You said, correct me if I'm wrong, you said this is for folks that have been recently incarcerated and
Formerly incarcerated women, yes.
and trying to get back out into society and
Yes.
contribute then?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Banks?
Now, the location is for the bingo, but the proceeds, you said, would go toward the nonprofit. Now, where's the nonprofit located?
The nonprofit organization is also going to be located at the same place.
Oh, okay.
We'll have offices there because we also will do other things in the community, like back-to-school drives, and we'll provide financial assistance to battered women, to single mothers. You know, there are other things that we do also. Our ultimate goal is to be able to take the funds from the bingo hall to open up the transitional home.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, at one point, there will be residents housed?
No.
No. Okay. There will not ever be anyone housed in this area?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
There will be persons employed there, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
They won't be living there, but they'll apply employee to work there and transition.
Yes.
It's part of the transitional training.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
Because we're only going to have the bingo hall on Saturday and Sunday, so the other days, we will use it to facilitate the things for our program, for the Highly Favorite Ministries.
Is that where Habitat is?
It's that same mall.
Same mall, out front.
Yeah, same mall.
Okay.
Restore.
Do we have any other comments?
I guess what your capital's going to come from, just charging a fee to play, is that basically it? I mean, is there any prizes or anything you give, or how's that going to work, or is it, people throw money in a pot and gamble on it, or anything like that? I read your outline here, and I couldn't, didn't understand that part of it.
Yeah, I'm going to let my mom answer the part about the bingo hall because she knows more about how the bingo hall is rendered.
Okay.
And basically, what we do is we do charge a donation of what they give to play the packs.
Right.
And then we do an announce of payouts of, here's what we'll pay out back. And for the most part, we would hope that we would receive more than we pay out.
Sure.
And then what we have left is what we will do to try and put back into the organization, the nonprofitable organization, to do, like my daughter said, the drives back to school or, you know, things of that nature for the city.
So, I'm just asking a question because I'm anticipating folks asking me the question, you know, when this comes up, and I'm not familiar with bingo halls. Maybe that's the norm for bingo halls, but, I mean, it's kind of borderline on gaming, you know? Is that, is it different than it, Mr. City Attorney?
Bingos for philanthropic charitable religious purposes exclusively were permitted by constitutional amendment to the Arkansas Constitution, and thereafter, there was enabling statutes that the legislature passed. And from what I can see, this, as long as they comply with the conditions, this comports to that you have to be in business for five years doing it.
Okay.
All the money has to go for charitable, religious, or philanthropic purposes. That is a condition here, and they have to meet all applicable federal, state, county, and city requirements and codes. And what's important there is that, I think it's the Department of Revenue oversees, they have to have a license from the Department of Revenue under state law. So, according to the conditions, yes, this seems to be consistent with state law, and yes, it's okay. It's not gaming the way
Okay.
But good question.
Well, and I didn't want, don't get me wrong, I'm not being critical. Wish you good luck, okay? I just want to anticipate folks asking me, you know, that question. Now, Charlie's educated, so thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other question? Think of going to the Catholic church and playing bingo. That's what they're doing.
I know. I don't do that.
They do it a lot.
I don't do that.
All right, any other questions or concerns? I have one question because of your location. It says, "Car washes. Wash cars for donation." Will y'all be doing this in this parking lot?
Not necessarily.
I would advise not to do it in that parking lot.
Right. We are affiliated also with the church that's down off of Camp Robinson, and so we do do some things with them also.
Yeah, I'd just be careful with car washes there. All right, any comments from the audience for or against it? All right, would you call the roll? Tim, Mr. Reeves, I'm sorry.
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. It passed, and if you'll get with Mr. Reeves or Tim tomorrow, he'll tell you what to do next.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, yes.
I'm glad you did that.
All right, we're going to do rezone 2019-3, and that's to rezone from R2 to C3 to allow for commercial development at the property of Windsong Drive. Is the applicant here?
Hello, I'm Jason Boutnik with Hapless Marler in North Little Rock.
Okay. All right, what are you wanting to do?
What we're looking at here is putting a quiet business facing 430. The business hasn't been, businesses haven't been determined, but we're looking for quiet type businesses, you know, to face the freeway for visibility. We have, per the staff recommendation and for the neighborhood, there's, we put a 70-foot buffer on the back part, the north part of the property, which butts up to the residential R1 properties. Excuse me. And then the property down to the south of us is commercial.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Mr. Foster?
Is my understanding, is this a 70-foot buffer? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I know it's in the summary here, it indicates that, but none on the other documents here?
I've got a new draw, a new drawing that shows, if you'd like to see it.
Okay.
I can bring it to you.
That's okay. That's because that's what we talked about in our
Yes.
plan to use.
On that north side, there's a full 70-foot across the whole.
So, basically, what you're going to do is just leave that alone?
Yes.
Not touch it in this?
It's a green, it's a green belt.
Right, right. So, it's, you look at the photograph of the aerial view, and it's wooded now, and you're going to leave it that way with, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a little clearer on that. It's actually being zoned to green belt, so it's more than a buffer. It is its own zone that cannot be touched.
Right.
So, it's more than a buffer. So, a buffer is just, you're saying in this distance, we're rezoning it to its own zone, and it'll be undisturbed.
So, the only way anybody could change that is come back here and
They'll have to notify the neighbors again.
Notify the neighbors, come back here for a rezoning and
Correct.
Good luck to them.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chambers?
Yeah, just to be sure, I'm absolutely certain, none of the easements or utilities required to develop the C3 property will be within the buffer area?
No, I mean, they'll have to go, I mean, in normal, that buffer, my understanding that buffer area can't be disturbed at all, so it'd have to be adjacent to it.
Okay, well, just out of curiosity, and this is an unusual suggestion, but I know what happens to buffers when they're cut off from their natural forest, is they sometimes just die because, you know, if you build a wall along that line, they're cut off from their natural flows of water and things like this. Is there any intent to have some sort of irrigation up there to help the buffer survive being cut off and separated from its natural environment?
At this time, that questioning isn't to be answered because there's, the development is not fully, I mean, that'd be discussed in site plan review
Okay.
upon, you know.
Do you plan, do you plan to build a retaining wall along the line where C3 touches the buffer? Retaining walls should be required, be needed because of the terrain.
Well, I mean, at that time, like I said, once we do the site plan review and the grading and all that stuff, then that would be discussed in that form, but until we do the site plan review or site plan on it, we wouldn't be able to tell you what, you know, we're going to end up putting out there, I mean, whether a wall's going to be required or not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chambers, to kind of follow through on your question there, I guess you submitted kind of a preliminary site plan here. Is that, will it kind of propose to build a three-story professional building? Is that, I know it's submitted with your package here, is that, how set in stone is that? The reason I ask that is because even with the way you have that, you know, located on the rest of the land here, it's pretty good ways from that rezoned buffer area. You plan on leaving the rest of that open, or?
Hold on one second. Mr. Reeves, you want to answer that? Mr. Foster?
What? I need you to come to the microphone, please, sir.
Charlie, I might be able to answer that. The answer is no, that's not a guarantee.
Okay, thank you.
Because this is a rezoning, so there's no, we can't add any conditions, so they, we ask for a, what's your plan? So, we have an idea, is the parking in the front and the parking in the back? Where's the building? So, it's just a concept, and, but as with any rezoning, the plan that they show is never
Right.
is not a guarantee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? I have one question to Sean or Tim, real quick. As far as a C3, what's the worst thing that could go in there?
Bar, restaurant, gambling house?
It won't, C3 usually doesn't have auto-oriented, so it won't be a car lot, it won't be car repair, be minor car repair. So, if that's something that you feel's not a good thing. A restaurant, so it could have the smells associated with a restaurant.
Bar?
Yeah, bar would be allowed.
Okay.
So, it's, it's commercial, so people will be coming and going, so there will be traffic.
Okay, and bringing up traffic, which is my question, since that's a residential area. Of course, I know it'll depend on what they put there, but is that road, is it in good shape? I did not go out there, so is it in good shape or is it bad?
It's a residential road, so it's
It's not in good shape, then.
I'm not the
Does that lead up to, what's the development up the top of the road there? Is it a nursing home or some kind of
Recovery center?
Recovery center, yeah.
Bridgeway?
Yeah, Bridgeway.
It's going back in that direction, yeah.
Right, but that's the access road to it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't it?
No, Bridgeway, the Bridgeway actually is, when you soon as you come over the freeway you keep going up straight past CAC.
That's right, thank you. Past by CAC.
Our side, if you soon as you come over the freeway, take a right right there
From the church.
and curve back.
Yeah, okay.
It's up along there.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to speak? And if y'all would, how many speakers do we think we have? Are we all going to say the same thing? Let's limit it to, how about four? Is four fair? Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, real quick, I'll ask you a question. Have street improvements would be required during the development, so there would be street improvements, but once they figure out what they're going to do.
Okay, that's
So, there will be, have street improvements done there.
All right.
But just not, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and if we could limit it, three minutes a person then, and all, everybody that's against this, please stand up so that way the commission will know.
Thank you.
All right, so there's no one for, all right, anybody, young, sit down. Thank you, though. Is there anybody for it in the audience, so we have to be fair? Raise your hand, thank you very much, all right, yes, sir. Would you put your name and your address, please?
Yes, sir, uh, my name is Michael Lawson. I live at seventy-four hundred Laurel Ridge Lane, North Little Rock.
Okay, right there.
Where's that in proximity to this site?
Right across the street.
Right across the street.
Across Wind Song Drive, yes, sir. Okay, so that's Laurel Street that comes off of there, okay, got you, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm here today speaking for myself and some of the fellow neighbors and property owners, some of which are here, some of which were not able to be here. I do have, um, twenty-six signatures on the petition from the other neighbors.
Would you give that to Mr. Reeves, please?
I'd like to, um, uh, point out that we are all in objection to the rezoning case. And I'd like to point out a few things concerning this property, so that the commission have a better understanding of why we're against it. First and foremost is the fact that the rezoning of this property would, um, uh, add a, uh, commercial intrusion into our, uh, single-family residential neighborhood. The property is in a limited access subdivision, meaning that, um, there's only one way in and out. It's an overpass on Bridgeway Road, a narrow overpass, um, that crosses Interstate four thirty. There's no other access to this, this subdivision. The property up for rezoning is over a half a mile away from the nearest through street, which is Crystal Hill Road. That, that intersects Bridgeway, which then intersects Wind Song. So you've got a few turns in order to get from the, a through street over to this, um, parcel of land that they're wanting to have rezoned. The street that provides the, uh, access to the property in question, Wind Song Drive, is not only unusually narrow, as noted by the Planning Commission summary, but it's also on a six percent grade at the location of this property. Also, it's about a hundred foot off of a curve on this Wind Song as it goes up that incline. Although residential traffic can navigate this pretty well, the, uh, commercial building and the trucks and, um, large vehicles that would be using it frequently, if not daily, are gonna have some trouble with it. Uh, rezoning this property from its current R two residential zoning to any commercial zoning will have a negative impact on the adjoining neighborhood, as also is noted by the summary by the Planning Department. The, uh, applicants had a, a previous request to go to a, uh, R two to C two zoning, and then they came back with a, a vision for a, um, three-story professional building here, and then changed the, uh, request to go from R two to even a more lenient, um, C three, which, uh, according to what I've looked at, uh, on the zoning regulations, um, the most restrictive C one zoning would be perfect for a professional building. Uh, in closing, I'd just like to say that I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-two years, and to my knowledge, this property has never been offered or advertised for sale. I know for a fact it's never had any signage in the last twenty-two years offering it for sale. So therefore, I see no basis for any kind of claim of, uh, a hardship that it can't be sold, um, and I see no reason for it to be rezoned into commercial. It's a great location, last year, we've had, uh, six existing home sales, two new homes completed, one new home currently under construction, and one new home that's going to begin construction next couple of months. So it, it's a vibrant area. And there again, I, um, uh, I and my fellow neighbors and property owners just ask that the commission would deny this rezoning request and keep the current residential zoning as it is. Thank you.
Excuse me, ask you a question, you had mentioned C one, are you opposed to any commercial?
We, we're opposed to any commercial, but.
Okay, you mentioned.
Just as to why they would want, uh, uh, a, a broadened, um, C three whenever they're, they're, have a vision of a, um, professional office building.
I just wanna make sure.
It should be a C one.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Lewis from seventy-four fourteen Laurel Ridge. My, uh, address is the street that, uh, you would come, the very first street that comes off of this property. And, uh, what I'm here to do is just kind of lay out the, to propose to you of what was given to me when we first moved in nine years ago this week on Valentine's Day. This has always been, we moved out there because this is a family place. And I'm gonna be opposed to it because that is what it's always been. We have six churches within two miles of where we live. We have CAC schools that's in our neighborhood. We have two churches in our neighborhood. We have an elementary school within less than two miles. What would be appropriate would be for this property to be considered across the road, over where the industrial community is, over where the big down bridge is, which is such a great place for families. One exit from us is, uh, Burns Park, which is a wonderful property in North Little Rock. North Little Rock is building a new property over by, uh, the Baptist facility, which is North Little Rock. And that's going to house new medical facilities. The community which I live in over there, you should take a drive through it, it's beautiful. What it houses are beautiful homes with wildlife. The home that Mike lives in, which is right across the street, my husband and I went down that street we live on, and we hit that corner where this property's gonna potentially wanna build on. And there was a deer crossing the street over into that property. So what you're wanting to do, instead of homes being built on that property through a hardship, you're wanting to take down woods for our lives, for lives of our beautiful deer and other creatures that live on it. You're wanting to take it down for a medical facility to go in. Our roads do not, are not built for commercial property. They're built for people with children and our neighbors to move in and for homes to be built on. I have drainage problems from the back end of my home that, when I first moved in, I tried to get North Little Rock to, to come out and do something about. I have drainage issues every time the rain comes down and Mother Nature visits me. Not only is my home affected with it, but multiple homes in that area are affected by drainage problems. You brought that up earlier, and yes, I would like to address, yes, there are serious drainage problems in that area. And yes, I, you know, are, I'm trying to address some of the things in that area that are, are of concern. And those are the things that, you know, concern me. One other thing is, I decided, how many minutes does it take to get to the other facilities? And I know my time is up. And the furthest away was, uh, I think it took twenty-two minutes from my facility to get to the New Baptist in Conway. The furthest away was fourteen minutes to get to Saint Vincent's in North Little Rock. And so with that in closing, I sure would appreciate you really considering whether or not this property is worth voting through in a residential area that really doesn't, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. The neighborhood it was built for people exactly like you and your husband and your wife and your children. Would you want that to go into your neighborhood? Just think about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have time for one more person. We have time for two, if you want to.
My name is Bobby Lee Wilson, I live at thirty-seven, I say seven zero zero seven South Point Cove, which is, as the crow flies, maybe five hundred feet from this property. I built up there in nineteen ninety-one. I moved up there because it was quiet. Uh, I love that place up there, very few people at that time knew it was there. These two, last two people have talked about just about everything that I wanna talk about, except one. That's a cul-de-sac, we live in a cul-de-sac. There's one way in, one way out, and that's already been mentioned, but it's gonna get worse as it, people build up there. There's a lot of land to be built on up there yet for residential. But if you put a commercial thing in there, the, the traffic's gonna be crazy. It's already crazy at, at school time, morning and evening. We have one, one school, two churches, and a hospital in that area. And to get out of there at any one given time can be a headache. I, I, I hope and pray that you will not do this thing that you're, that they're wanting to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have time, if that young man wants to speak. Did you wanna say something, sir? Nope, you're good? Are we all good? All right, any, any other questions from the commissioners? Mr. Chambers? No. No, hang on one second. We'll, we'll respond, just hang on. Any, any, Ms. Chambers?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to answer Mr. Foster's comment about the, uh, road improvements. They will be required to make half-street improvements, but on the entire length of the road, they will only be required to improve half of two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet. So it's not a lot there. We would normally ask that this type of development be on a collector's street, or at least one built to industrial standards, and that, uh, and it's also a, by our subdivision standards, uh, the cul-de-sac is actually, uh, far beyond the length that the fire marshal cares for in terms of service. I think the maximum length of a cul-de-sac for, that the fire marshal cares for is six hundred feet. The, uh, those are the two issues I have with the, with the development. Also, this little sketch here shows that we can get eight generous single-family lots on the property.
Let me ask Sean a question, on these, uh, commercial property along, uh, Wind Song Drive, as you're tearing up in there, correct me if I'm wrong, but they've been, those businesses have been there for a long time and been zoned C two for a long time, is that correct, or are they?
Correct, yeah, uh, they've, they've changed ownership, or the businesses have changed a couple of times.
Right.
But there was the, the, something car lot or car sales that's still assigned, yeah, corporate in there, and then the Dr. Boatright.
Right.
Is there now, and I can't remember what was there before.
A furniture store.
Yes, yep. And, uh, but yeah, it's, those have been there, the buildings were built for that use, so.
And actually, we put restrictions on both of those when they, they applied.
I mean, before my time, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. They have to come to the microphone, please, sir.
Tommy Wright.
Yes, sir. And your address?
Is, uh, one-six-nine-two-three Lone Pine Road in North Little Rock.
Thank you, sir.
And this property's been in our family for fifty years. And, uh, quite frankly, I think I'm the longest resident that lived out there. I moved out there before the freeway came through. And it took my, my house, and I had to move it up the hill to West Wind, and I lived there for twenty years. And my father-in-law is the one that developed that whole area, basically. You know, we, and I developed, uh, White Oak Village, which is, uh, a hundred and something lots, right there off of Crystal Hill Road. But my point is, we, uh, are his dream, when the freeway came through, you know, started off with K O A. And then, you know, his, his idea of the whole development was on the freeway to have businesses that could take advantage and be seen from the freeway, and that's all this property is. It all faces the freeway. And quite frankly, it would never serve for a single-family home because of the noise. You know, I would never build on it, and, uh, because of that, uh, as far as, uh, there is two ways out of there. You know, if you go up past the, all these businesses there now, and go over the top of the hill and back down, there's a street down there called Lonesome Dove, and it comes back and comes around to, uh, Bridgeway. So the only, only place there's one way is just the overpass. And that, you know, someone mentioned that overpass, that's a standard two-lane overpass, it's not no, a small one. But, uh, you know, I built, the, I'm gonna say the majority of the homes up there on that hill. And, uh, but it's been a while, I, I counted them the other day, and it's like twelve or thirteen homes. And I lived up there for twenty-something years. And all along, we planned on developing the land. The reason why I sat there so long is because of the fact it's on the freeway, it'd be a little bit, it, it'd have to get somebody to come in that would want visibility to the freeway. And that would be like a, a law firm, an engineering firm, uh, something that would fit in there where people would be there during the day and go home at night, which is kind of our vision as to who might end up buying that property. And as far as three-story, that's what's, businesses are down in, uh, North Shore. And it's not just because it's zoned for that, uh, it might not ever be, you know, might be a one-level building. But, uh, I'm trying to remember what all, well, there's no, no signs been on the property because it's never been for sale. It's time to sell it because my father-in-law's dead now, and all of us are getting no younger. And, uh, you know, that's why it's put on sale, all the family members are, some of them's younger than me, which, but, you know, I ain't getting no younger, so it's time to, to do, do something with the property.
Yes, sir. Do you have a question for him?
Mr. Wright, um, you know, you made one comment about, and it's probably very true, is if, uh, this doesn't go through, that property probably gonna sit there forever like it is because, you know, single families, you know, I wouldn't want a house there that close to the freeway. But, um, have you met or tried to meet with these group of people to see if there's something?
Absolutely, we had a meeting at Wind Song. Now, I don't know how many of these people came, but we had quite a few.
And they were just totally opposed to any commercial there?
Not a single one of them was opposed to it, that came to that meeting.
Oh, what about this group that we hear?
I don't know them.
Let me, let me.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Let me ask you this, you know.
Just up here.
We're not, I feel like we're not just here to legislate, you know, and say yes or no of these things, you know. If there's a possibility for something to work out on both situations, I'd like to pursue that, but I hear, see a bunch of heads shaking no out there. And if, if that's the case, then, um, is that the consensus of you guys out here in the audience that have come against this? That, uh, you would not consider anything other than leave it zoned like it is?
Excuse me, hang on one second.
Okay, well then, um, I'll, I'll cease my comments, thank you.
Okay, I, I have one question.
Okay.
And then, and then, um. You'd, you'd made two statements, first of all, you didn't know who these people were, but you'd built a lot of these homes. Were any of these people that you built homes with ever aware that you were gonna put a commercial spot there?
I think most of them were when K O A came in across the freeway, and then it, it started off with CAC School, and I call that commercial, and, and then it, then Wind Song Church, and then, uh, Corporate Motors, then Boatright. All along the freeway, it's a natural deal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, well, I was.
Oh, you got one more? Okay.
Well, I was gonna respond, I can't remember what it was right now, but, oh, I don't, you know, if these people, did any of y'all come to the Wind Song Church?
Okay, everybody up here. Okay. Can have her own meeting. All right, okay.
That's all I got.
All right.
Wait a minute, maybe I misunderstood something. I thought you said that those that attended the church meeting, that you had at the church, I mean, that, uh, they were in favor of, is that what you said?
I personally didn't hear anybody say that they were against it.
Oh, okay, but you all were there, and you all were against it at that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you all didn't get a chance to speak at the meeting, though? Okay.
Okay, hang on one second, hang, hang on one second.
I don't have anything else.
Thank you, sir. Hang on one second, ma'am. The young man with the glasses on his head that spoke up, I need you to come to the microphone and speak. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna take your comment, and I'm gonna take, I think it's his wife or a relative in the back, we're gonna take his comment, and then we're gonna close it.
All right, my name is James McGlon, I live at seventy-four eleven Laurel Ridge Lane, which is probably a football field's distance from where they're building this, um, where they're putting in this area. I know I was there, and everybody I've seen here today was at the meeting, the general meeting at the church the other day. Not a one of us, and I was in the middle of it, uh, along with others, and nobody had any, uh, anything, nobody was for this other than the people that are trying to develop it and build it.
Yes, sir.
The area that they're looking at, uh, we do have businesses already there, uh, traffic is a concern going in and out of there. There is only one way in and one way out. You can get, it's the same road, you can get to it two different ways, but it goes the same distance. Uh, I also know that on, uh, ice days or cold days, our incline that we have to climb up is a disaster to try to get up. Most people have to park down at the bottom of the hill and hike their way unless they have a four-wheel drive to get to their house. Uh, the other concerns that we have regarding this is because of the traffic, this is going to increase. We're gonna have to put in red lights, uh, the wa, streets are gonna have to be widened, there's gonna have to be turning lanes put in this. There's not a really conceivable way to, uh, make this a business plan to where you can get in and out of there, uh, efficiently. Plus, the, as a business, and plus the homeowners getting in and out on time.
Okay.
Another concern that, uh, we, we just, is going around this, you know, I heard the gentleman talk about visual, visuals, uh, frontage, uh, on, off four-thirty. I know, being business owner at one time myself, it's great to have good visual, but if you don't have adequate access to it, the visual's not helped for, it, it can be a deterrent for you more than to help.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right, and then the young lady in the back. And this is the last one, and we're gonna vote.
I'm Suzie Witkowski, um, I wasn't anticipating speaking.
It's okay.
I will be happy to put my hand on the Bible. I saw most of these people that are here behind me, their lots where they built their house. I've always said at some point in the future that this will be commercial along the freeway. So we're just now to the point where we're trying to look ahead for the future to put some of the very low-key. It could be, I know in the middle of Pleasant Valley, they have, uh, a cul-de-sac there that's nothing but law offices.
Right.
Right in the middle of cul, you know, the residential. So we're, we're just trying to put something kind of low-key.
But my, my understanding, though, is you're gonna sell the property to someone, and then they're gonna develop it.
We're not gonna develop it.
And see, that's the problem, that may be the problem with the Planning Commission, is we don't have control on who you sell it to.
Well, we can.
So we don't know if there'll be a law office or.
Correct, we, we don't know.
That's the only issue here, if you were gonna develop it and you told us and had plans on it, then it's easier for us to say, yeah, we know what it is, now.
But we, we're not gonna sell it unless it is something low-key.
Yeah, but we don't know that.
And then several mi, four of my family members still live in that area on the hill.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna give him one more second, 'cause he raised his hand and he started it.
I just wanna say, you know, in between those residents in that neighbor, or in the development, we are, you know, we met with staff prior to, you know, the meeting, and went over to put that seventy-foot buffer in there for the neighborhood, you know, to help with the noise, help with, you know, anything in between there to keep it natural. You know, it was agreed upon with the staff, you know, that that would be, the seventy foot's what they. 70 foot's what they, you know, was the number they came up with. You know, it wasn't something, you know, where he said, hey, we're gonna put 20 foot in there, and they said 50. They said 70, and we, we went with that number.
Okay.
Per staff's comments.
All right. Thanks, sir. Okay. Y'all have any?
Sean, what's allowed in R two? I know what R one is, but R two's a little more.
It's, it's same as R one, other than you can do a special use.
Okay, right.
So it's a single-family house only.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Are we ready to vote? Would you call the roll, Mr. Reeves?
Banks?
No.
Blasco?
No.
Chambers?
This is ideally suited, in my opinion, because of the freeway and all, for commercial, but the access and the substandard streets getting to it in terms of infrastructure, I, I can't support it. No.
Foster?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Wallace?
No.
Chairman White?
Uh, I have to ask the attorney a question first. I'm gonna recuse myself from voting on this because of a con, small conflict of interest. So, sir, it failed. So what you'll have to do now is, is if I'm correct, and correct me, Mr. Reeves, is get an alderman to sponsor you, and then get with Mr. Reeves, and then it would go in front of the city council. And for the people in the audience, we're just a recommending board. We are not the final say-so, the final vote, so there's a good chance it'll go to city council. Okay? And will they be notified, or will they, okay, that you'll be notified? All right. Oh, no, y'all don't get to leave yet. The meeting's not over. Okay. All right.
Move to, no, that's right with you.
Let them go.
Any, any comments? Okay, this is a public comment? Does anyone have a public comment?
No, we have one more comment. We have one more thing.
There's one more item.
I'm sorry, y'all can go after. I thought we were done. Stay though.
We're gonna go ahead. Uh, this is 2019-1. I apologize if I didn't see it. It's to revoke the unlicensed conditional use applications.
Yes. And so, uh, what we've done in the past, when you apply for a conditional use, you have one year to get your business license and come in compliance with the items. So these lists here are the items that are not, that no one ever followed through on. And so we, we, there's different ways to interpret the ordinance, and so we were interpreting it as, after a year, it goes away. We're just making it clear, cleaner, and making sure it goes back to city council and gets a city council vote. So it's, that's definite. There's no question it's a dead file.
Okay.
So, uh, all these businesses have been, they never opened up within a year, or that, ever.
They just need to be taken off the books.
They need to be taken off the books and, and cleared up. So we're, we're gonna do it official this way, and then from now on, after a year, we'll come to you guys with a couple of them at a time and do it.
Okay.
So this is.
Ooh, on the chairman.
Go ahead. I thought you had recognized me.
Are you making a motion?
No, no, I'm not. I have a question.
All right. Mr. Chambers?
Okay. So, Charlotte, these are people that have never opened. It's not that they have a business and they never got their license.
Correct. They never opened at all. And so there was a couple in that situation, we worked, we worked out the issue with them.
So these are unopened businesses?
That never.
That have to appear before us and get a new conditional use or anything to make things right. Got it?
So, so we, no one even.
And no refunds.
Yeah.
And no refunds, yeah. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion?
We'd like a vote, send it to the council.
Okay, we'd like to have a motion?
I'll put, move to approve.
Move to vote.
Okay, we got a motion. Now we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Would you call the roll on this one?
Banks?
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Now I can have the public comment section. Y'all go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Chambers.
Uh, yeah. It looks like you got two things cleaned up at once. Everyone's sworn in, and you've got all your dead conditional uses trying to get off the list.
And did everybody get their little reports sent in?
I did.
I did.
Okay.
Ron and Abby did.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I sent mine in for once. Good thing I was sworn in then. I have one question to Mr. Spencer again. Yard people in the city of North Little Rock, people that we pay to do our yards, and, and especially, it's, it's more in commercial areas like where I live, on Crestwood, on McCain, on North Hills, on, let's see, that would be it, where the yard people that are hired to clean up, they just blow all their stuff out in the street. And then when it blows out in the street, then it goes into our drainage system, and the drainage system ends up in the Lakewood Lakes, which then the city in Lakewood has to spend thousands of dollars to clean up every 10 years or build a new dam or something. Do we have any regulation on the books that says that's against the rules?
I will check in. Zoning book does not. So there's nothing zoning, zoning can do about it. But from what I understand, I think there is.
There is? And, and so enforcement of that would be the police department or code?
I'd, I'd have to research on that.
Could you do that for me, if you don't mind? Because it's, it's getting out of hand now. Yeah. In our area, it is. I don't know about y'all's areas, but it's out of hand. Okay. All right. Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, tying off of that, the NPDES, Nonpoint Source Regulations, the federal government governs that kind of thing, and we're a signatory to that. So yes, there are regulations. And it's actually worse than just Lakewood cleaning out their lakes because when you blow stuff down the storm drains, it ultimately accumulates and clogs the storm drains and costs the city thousands and thousands of dollars to either replace or clean those storm drains.
So then my question.
It didn't blow out easy.
So my question to Mr. Spencer then, that he's gonna work on, is who's enforcement on that?
Correct.
I mean, is there enforcement that I'm driving down the street, call 800 number and say, or do you give me a badge and let me stop and talk to them?